Stay a little bit closer to the bone as we, as we still navigate through this transitional period and some of the other inflationary and otherwise pressures that we're facing. So I mean, I think this is an incredibly responsible and responsive budget. And I, yeah, thank you one more time. Can't thank you enough.
So that concludes our report, Davis.
Okay.
Turn it back over to you.
Excellent. All right. And I've, I've got my technology sorted out a little bit better here. So from there, we are moving on to number six, which is items for discussion, followed by motions, which we will need. And the first up is the adoption of the FY 26 budget. So let me, let's see. Larry or Christine, can you just cite the, the number that I am, I'm putting up for a vote right now so I can repeat it?
Yep.
Fifteen million, six hundred ninety-five, four hundred eighty-two dollars.
All right, I will take, yes, I will take a motion to approve the Madison School District budget of fifteen million, four hundred and ninety. What's that?
Six hundred ninety-five.
Fifteen million, six hundred ninety-five.
Four eighty-two.
Okay, and forty-two.
Four eighty-two.
Four eighty-two, I'm sorry, it's a little hard to hear.
I move that we approve the 2026 budget for fifteen million, six hundred ninety-five thousand, four hundred and eighty-two dollars.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that? Any, any further discussion since we did just see the budget? Okay, in that case, hearing none, I will conduct a roll call vote. And this time I will start with the folks online. So Bill, how do you vote?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well. So the budget for FY 26 is approved. And just thank you one more time for all of the hard work that everyone on the Budget Committee put in.
Thank you so much, everybody. This has been, yeah, well done.
All right, so next up, 6B, we have February Budget Information Meeting Logistics.
Yeah, so I shared the date with you earlier.
Yep.
We, we, and I'll just say it again, so that everybody knows, it is February, get to my slide, 26, at six thirty in room 10, we found last year that the sound in room 210 works better for presenting the budget.
Yep.
So, you know, we'll take care of tech and warning and all of those logistics for the budget. In the past, we've done a dinner prior, but it has not been very successful. So I think the board needs to decide if that's something that they would like to entertain for this time.
Sure, I think that last time that we met, we talked about, I, I don't think that it's worth doing the dinner again. I think that it's, that's, you know, our food service does such a great job, but that's really a lot of time and resources to expend on something that not a lot of people are taking advantage of. I think it might be nice if we just, if we did like coffee and dessert kind of thing, something simple. And I mean, if, i- i- if that's something that food services is, is able to do, that would be great. Otherwise, I mean, i- if there's a way that we could somehow contribute that and wanted to put that together, I think that's doable too on that scale. But yeah, I think, I think that, and really just keep it all in 210. I think I've seen events where they have like the coffee and snacks table at the back end of the room. I think that that'll, I think that'll suit our purposes.
Okay, yeah. Last year, Davis, one thing I think that fell off our radar was inviting Windsor on air. So I don't know if that's something the board wants, wants Windsor on air here.
I believe we, I think we, I think we had Windsor on air. I'm fairly sure.
Last year we did.
Yeah.
We did not.
Okay, so who, who wants to reach out to Windsor on air? And I'm happy to, if you want, but Davis, you've got.
Yeah, I'll, I can talk to Paula about that. Yeah, yeah, I think Paula, Paula wasn't here last year, but she sent somebody from Windsor on air and we got it recorded. But yeah, I can, I can reach out to her.
Our moderator, she's confirmed, so I think we're good.
Awesome, yep. And Kate does a fantastic job. Any, any other thoughts on the board about that? Or are we pretty good just doing, doing some, some light refreshment?
I think it's a very good idea. I think the most people who were having dinner were the board. And so.
Yeah, like I said, it was, it was a lot of resources for something that just wasn't, that wasn't going as far as we needed it to, so, yeah. Elizabeth?
Plus, plus, we are going to be serving dinner to the community right before that.
Yes, absolutely. Yes, and I'll, I think before the end of the meeting, we'll, we'll touch on that briefly and I'll, and you know, preview, I'll be following up with that online because that's logistics. All right, so I think that that is settled then. We are on to 6C, which is Public High School Choice.
Yeah, and that's a carryover from the last meeting. And under Act 128, which we, we all looked at at the last meeting and were a little confused by the language. So I do have some clarification, which I can read to you. It is, the essence of the law is that the board may limit the number of students who transfer out to another high school to five percent of the total high school population, or 10 students as a minimum, and 10% or 40 students as a maximum. And the board must by February 1st announce the district's capacity to accept students. Our lawyer's recommendation is you just use the same number for both. So the board needs to do that tonight. And I can share that in my tenure here, which has been short, I think we've had two students apply for high school choice, just to give you a reference, so.
Sure.
I think, you know, the minimum number is probably adequate, but that's up to all of you.
When they apply to go to another school, do the parents pay?
No. We pay? No.
No.
There what?
The sending school under Act 128, it doesn't affect the LPOD, yeah.
Right.
They are our students.
Okay.
That's why it's a cap.
Yeah. Yeah.
All right, well, it's another one of those ones. I think I need those numbers, numbers again, to make a motion, I think I need the.
Okay. So the minimum is 10? For, for transferring out? And then you have to set a number for your, for transferring in. And it can be the same number or it can be a different number. And the range is 10 to 40?
All right. So I will take a motion to accept 10 students tuitioning in and 10 students transitioning out for the next, it's for the next year, correct?
Yes.
Yep, for the next year.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion? All right, hearing none, I will take a roll call vote. We'll start with Nancy.
Aye.
How do you vote? Aye. Megan?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
And I am an aye, so the motion passes. And thank you for taking the time to clarify that one, Christine, kind of like.
Confusing.
A little bit confusing, but yeah, it's. All right, um, okay, and 6D, District Clerk. So I did do a little bit of outreach to some folks and somebody I've known for a very long time, Aaron Minard, longtime Windsor resident, really wonderful, reliable human being, has agreed to take this appointment. He, he sends his regrets, he talked to me, he, he wanted to be here tonight, but he had a, a prior engagement and couldn't make it. But he's been in touch with, with me as well as Larry and Christine, and we are ready to onboard into that process and support him. Like I said, I can't, can't vouch for Aaron enough, just really wonderful guy. So with that being said, I will take a motion to appoint Aaron Minard as the District Clerk for 2025.
Can I just ask, how do you spell Minard?
M-I-N-A-R-D.
Oh, okay, thanks.
So moved.
Second.
All right, any discussion?
Thank you, Davis.
Yes, Davis, thank you.
Yep, no problem. Yeah, I was, I shook some trees, but I really, I'll say one more time, I don't think we could have gotten a much better candidate. Aaron is, like, I've known him most of my life, just an extremely competent, intelligent, caring human being. And Len, last I spoke to him, he said he was actually very excited to be taking on this role and helping us out, because he knows how important it is to, to have these processes run smoothly. So he is, he's ready for it. And, you know, between now and Election Day with all those tasks, you know, I'll, I'll be in touch with him as well as Larry and Christine, or anybody else who can help, help support him in, in making things run smoothly. All right. Well, if there is no more discussion or comment, I will bring us to a roll call vote, and we'll start with Megan. How do you vote? Nancy?
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, so we have a District Clerk. Fantastic, all right, and it is Aaron Minard, which is extra fantastic, all right. So the last item we have for discussion and motions if needed is 6E, which is HACTC Board Representative.
What is HACTC?
That's the Hartford, Hartford Technical Center.
Ah, good, thanks.
The last representative was Rebecca, I believe.
I thought, I thought I, are you? I thought I was, and if I, but then I haven't heard anything, so I didn't, I just.
You still can be.
Oh, something, but I thought you were too.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean, Megan, if you, if you thought you were, are you, if you're willing to be reappointed?
I don't mind if you want to just fill me in, Christine, I will.
All right.
I was thinking about that this week, and I asked about it.
All right, well, I will take a motion to appoint Megan as the HACTC Board Representative.
I think I already was. I think we did it with the reorg meeting.
We did.
I thought we did too, yeah. Was this, so I mean, if we don't need to again, I guess we can just high five and, and.
I'll make sure.
Yeah, Christine, if you want, is this okay if we wait until the next meeting and if there was some, a flood, we can just approve it then, or appoint, appoint them? Okay, awesome. Well, cool. I'm glad, glad you're still the rep, Megan, thank you. All right, so that brings us to the end of our items for discussion, so we are going to be setting our next agenda now.
We, we added a couple, Davis.
Oh, we did, I'm sorry, yeah, this is the. All right, so what's, what was our next one? This is resignations and.
Yeah, I think you can do, you do the surplus first, and Larry can do it. Yeah, so we have an FY 24 surplus of, hold on, second, one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three. That can go against the tax increase or go to capital reserve. Obviously, we would love for it to go to capital reserve. But that is up to the board, and if it's not going to the tax rate, we have to put it on the warning for the voters to approve.
Let's see, Bill?
Going around certain buildings, I, I think it's prudent to put it into the capital reserve fund.
All right, Elizabeth?
Same, ditto.
All right, so, let's see.
Christine, you said if we put it into the capital reserve, it has to be, it has to go on the warning for the voters to approve.
Okay, yeah, so it'll just go, we'll just, I'll let Lori know to put it on there.
Okay. Um, yeah, and before any more discussion, I think I'll just make a motion. Can you just repeat that number for me one more time?
Yeah, it was one hundred twenty-nine, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars.
All right, um, I will, Elizabeth?
I move that we move the FY 24 budget surplus of one hundred and twenty-nine thousand, nine hundred and twenty-three dollars to capital reserve.
Second.
All right, any discussion on that point?
Thanks, Dan, for building a really tight FY 24 budget.
Yeah, pretty great.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. And, yeah, I, I agree, I know that we, we had some costs, some stuff that we deferred from last year's budget, or adjusted out of last year's budget, particularly around buildings and grounds, facilities that, you know, as, as much as it would be fantastic to return that to taxpayers, we, we really need to address those things, just somewhat existentially. Bring that to our capital reserve. Bill?
The simple fact is that there are some items that if we don't take care sooner than later, then they will become more expensive in the long run. So this would be a prudent step.
Yes, yes, thank you, Bill, yeah, no, the observation that cost today is, putting that cost in today, sometimes it defers some greater cost tomorrow. It was, I appreciate that, because it's true, and I think it's not always voiced or appreciated, so thank you. Any further discussion? All right, hearing none, I will take a roll call vote, starting with Elizabeth.
Aye.
Bill?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, so the motion is passed. Thanks, everyone. And Elizabeth?
Just as an aside, Davis, did you know that it is actually perfectly legal, under open meeting law and under Robert's rules, to, if you have a sense as the chair, that everybody is going to pass it, you can just pass it with, unless there are objections?
I, I did not recall that in the moment, but that is good to know.
I mean, on something like this, I don't think you should, but, but, but on minutes, for example, just saying.
That, you know what, I'm always down for things that can make these meetings even more efficient, so I will, I will keep that in mind going forward. Thank you, Elizabeth. All right, on to our next items for discussion or motions. I think, are we now on to resignation and, yeah?
Yeah, so we had a, a request from a, a support staff member, her name is Allison O'Neill. She is writing to inform that she plans to resign from her position effective 1/21/2025. And she has stated some personal reasons for resigning. She's support staff, so she does have in her contract the ability to resign within two weeks' notice, so. That's to bring to your attention, we usually let you know and weigh in on that. The other one is a leave from, requested from a, our high school science teacher. It's a parental leave, he's planning on taking 10 weeks for the birth of his second child. And again, he's entitled to that leave, so the board doesn't need to weigh in, but I'm letting you know, because I think it's exciting for him. And we'll be posting for his, for a long-term sub for that position.
All right, Elizabeth?
When does that leave begin, Christine?
It, so it's not a firm date, because we don't know when the baby's going to come, but it is around February, mid-February to April. So 10 weeks in that time, right?
Thank you.
Yeah. And the last one, sorry, I've got one more. So we have, the board has, and the board needs to weigh in on this one. This is a, a middle school math teacher, and he writes the letter, I think I, I asked Lori to put it in the portal, and we have hard copies here, but I will read it to you. He, I hope that this message finds us well, he's writing to formally resign from his position as sixth grade math and science teacher at Windsor School in the Windsor Southeast Supervisor Union District, effective immediately. This decision was made not, was not made lightly, and I have been struggling with it for a while. I have respect for the school, my colleagues, and the students. I have had the privilege to teach. However, after much reflection, I have determined that stepping away from my role is the best course of action for personal reasons at this time. I want to express my gratitude for the opportunity to have worked at Windsor in 2013, and then again in 2024, and to contribute to the education of its students. It has been an honor to work alongside such dedicated professionals. I sincerely hope that my departure causes minimal disruption, and I would be happy to discuss how I can try to assist with ensuring a smooth transition if I am able to. Thank you for your understanding, and I wish the school and its greater community continued success in all its endeavors, and that is. Signed, J.J. Vasco. So I will need a board action on that, that resignation.
All right.
What position does it leave the school in for a replacement?
We, we will post after this, tomorrow morning, immediately. We have a plan in place that currently the math classes are being covered by one of our other middle school math teachers, covering one school. And our middle high school math teacher, Tammy Psyche, is covering the other math period. Science, we're still figuring out. But there's a sub in there currently, and we have some ideas, so we're pretty confident that we will have a short, a short-term solution that could be a long-term solution if necessary.
So. So at this time, I will take a motion to accept the resignation of John Joseph Vasco Jr., effective immediately, correct?
Yes.
Okay. Yes, I might have missed it. Did we get a movement a second, or are we still waiting?
So moved.
Second.
Okay, discussion. Bill?
So in, I'm kind of, not sure where it is in the portal, but from, from my understanding of what Christine just read, there was no reason given, no situation.
It's wrapped, personal, it says the personal reasons.
Okay, so there was no legitimate or reason to accept his resignation. So my, my vote is going to be nay, because I don't think we should accept the resignation. He has a contract, and that contract was valid. The option of you know, four months is the reality of signing a contract. I think this is sort of our first test, the last time we, we went through this, that was, it was, and since then, we discussed it, I believe, in the summer about what sort of, what sort of situation would be an actual reason to accept someone's resignation. So in personal reasons is, I don't feel is, an actual reason to accept a resignation.
Colleen?
Hello, everyone. I would just like to say that without violating any ROPA or any confidentiality, I am happy to follow up with just the minimal knowledge that I have that does not include anything about for personal reasons from the perspective of the teacher, but just things that I have that are related to the role that I'm, I think I can share with you in an executive session, unless, otherwise it has to happen, so, just so you know.
Yep, and we are, because this is, we're talking about possibly terminating a contract or not, this does, we can go into executive session about contracts. Is there a sense from the members of the board that we would like to hear some additional information before making this decision?
Yes.
Yes.
Yes?
Yes.
Okay. All right, Elizabeth?
I move we go into an executive session.
Second, I'm gonna put us in a breakout room, if that's okay? For the executive session.
Okay, and that's an executive session to discuss contracts, correct?
Yeah, I think I can't do it until you, you need to make a motion first, right?
So that was moved and seconded, so I will, let's see, I will just take a very quick roll call vote. Bill?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
Nancy? And I am an aye as well, so we are entering into executive session.
Give me one second.
Yep.
Something that some of us should stay for or leave for?
That, Davis, that, that would have been one where you could have said without objection.
I, if I were in the room, I would have done that, but yeah.
Just so you know, I'm, I mean, I only just learned it myself, and I was like, ooh.
I, I remember reading about that in the Robert's Rules handbook, but I, I have been less clear about the exact application, so I don't typically do it, but that's, yeah.
It's one of the lesser-known rules for small boards.
I'm going to open the room, you should give an invitation.
Okay, so we have exited executive session at 7:43 PM. And because the motion to accept the resignation was still live before we entered, I think that I can just call for a vote on that. So Bill, how do you vote?
Aye.
Elizabeth?
Aye.
Megan?
Aye.
And I am an aye as well, so the resignation is accepted. And Nancy, for those of us who, those watching the recording, Nancy had to step out before the end of this meeting, which is why I did not call her. We still have a quorum. All right, um, just jump back to the agenda, and we, I think we were on to setting the next agenda, is that correct?
Yep, so that'll be February, we're at Albert Bridge.
All right.
Traditionally, in February, the administrative report is a, is a run-through of the budget information session. So we'd like to do that, we'll be working on that this month. And then the, I have on my notes, items for discussion, we wanted to bring up the community dinner to remind everybody, Davis.
Absolutely, yeah, I think that would be, that would be prudent, that meeting. Any other additions for the next agenda, people have in mind?
When is our next student showcase of learning?
It is after, it is in March. So typically during the budget season, I don't add those, because we're just busy with budget, but.
Which group is March?
Say, 6/8 Windsor, Colleen.
No, we did ours. I switched mine with somebody, because we did ours.
It's Tracy. It's K5.
I didn't want anyone to lose their turn.
Thank you, Colleen.
So in March. Change that.
Excellent, all right, we can, we can talk about how we're going to do that in February, so that's also during reorg, reorg too, right?
Yeah, it is, yeah.
What's the date for the February meeting?
It's the third.
It's the 10th, because the third, we want to move it to the 10th so we can reorganize.
No, no, that's March. In February, we're the third.
Oh, sorry.
February, I think we're still on the regular schedule, but March, we have to change. Yeah, no, let me check back, yeah, we're, February 3rd is the next meeting.
Excellent. Okay. Awesome. So yeah, it seems like a pretty good next agenda. And like I said, I will I'll reach out to folks. I am also sure that knowing Mary McNaughton, she will reach out to me, if not all of us. And I'll Christine, I'll loop in on that, too. I know the board is primarily responsible for that. If other folks want to take part in it and help out, that would be fantastic, too. But, you know, there's no expectation or obligation to do that beyond the the six of us. So.
I will be around. I'll be around in February, so I'll I'll help. It's it's a fun.
Awesome. All right. Yeah, it is a lot of fun. If if nobody's been to community dinners, they are really, really fun. So I'm looking forward to it. But yeah, we can talk about that more next month. We don't need another executive session, so I will take i- if there's no objection, I will move to end this meeting at 7:46 PM. All right.
It feels odd.
I know. Well, hey, thanks for.
Yeah. And it also feels it feels really weird to end a budget meeting at 7:46. Well done, everybody.
Yeah, thank you. Thank you very much.
Thanks, everyone. Have a great night.
All right. Take care.
All right.
Bye.
Bye.
The beginning portion of the January 9th Mount Ascotney School District Board meeting was not recorded, unfortunately. So Larry and I are here this morning to present the budget as proposed and approved that night and and is reflected in the minutes from that meeting. So I'm going to start. And the principals presented a little bit at the beginning of the report their updates for their FY26 budget. And as you can see on the slide, there were no additions to the FY26 Mount Ascotney School District budget proposed. The increases in the budget are due to the 11.9% increase in healthcare costs. The negotiated staff negotiated contract wages and another negotiated part of the contract, which allows staff to be paid for some school events that happen after school hours. And then the SU assessment increased. When principals were working on the budget, they did propose some reductions to the FY26 budget. One of those reductions is a elementary school teacher for the FY26 school year. And that was based on student enrollment numbers and an elimination of a part time .4 PE position. Those would affect the Windsor School. At ABS, there has been a reduction in the nurse nurse help position. Currently, it was reduced this year, so it will be reduced in next year's budget as well. That position went from a .9 to a .6 position. On our website, there is a link to the budget book, which gives you all the information regarding the budget. That link has been live since October and is updated regularly by Larry, who is now going to present the tax rate calculation for us. Should come up, Larry. I don't know why that's not. One second. There you go.
Okay, so now I'm going to go over the Mount Ascotney School District tax rate calculation. When determining the tax rate, everything up to the CLA for Windsor, West Windsor are exactly the same. And then after the CLA is when Windsor, West Windsor's tax rates diverge. So right now we're talking about the district. So the expenditures are what you see in the budget book, that 15.6 million. The offsetting revenue at Mount Ascotney is basically all high school tuition. So we subtract out the revenue from the expenditures and we get net education spending. LTW ADM is currently 924.33. We have not received the final LTW ADM numbers. That will change the tax rate. That's why these are estimates. We expect to get the final numbers this week. Net education spending for LTW ADM is taking that 924 divided by 14.1 billion. And you end up with $15,306. There are no exclusions for excess spending calculation. An exclusion would be like, for example, a bond payment in FY26, which it does not exist. And it has to be a bond payment that was approved for the state prior to a certain date. So the only districts in our SU that enjoy that is Wethersfield. We have an estimated excess spending threshold of 15,926. That's what the state sets as the excess spending threshold. Since our $15,306 is below that 15,926 per LTW ADM, the excess spending threshold does not come into existence for this district. The state sets the homestead yield in the December 1st tax letter that currently is 8,553. We take that and divide it by the 15,306 and 13 cents per LTW ADM. And that's how you receive the equalized homestead tax rate of $1.78. Then there's a five cent discount for Act 84 that was passed last year for Mount Ascotney School District. And they about 15 or 20 school districts in the state receive the discount based on what the state would consider an on-ramp to LTW ADM to help depry some of those costs. So we take that 178, we minus out the five cents, and we have 17340. Now we compare. So that 17340, each town has a different CLA. So when we take Windsor and West Windsor both had reappraisals done recently, so their CLA is a healthy over 100%. So we take that 173 divided by 142, and now you have a homestead tax rate of 12171. The non-homestead tax rate is set by the state at 179, and then they multiply that by the 142, and that's how you end up with a 125. So to compare year over year, 25 tax rate for Windsor was a buck 20. That's the current tax rate homestead. And next year, we are estimating 121, which is about a penny increase or a percentage increase of about a percent. So our tax rate is going up roughly for Windsor taxpayers. We estimate about 1%. West Windsor had 149%. You take that 116 by sorry, that 173, but by the 149%, you end up with 116. And their non-homestead was 119. Last year, this current year, their homestead tax rate is a buck 10. We are estimating it to be $1.16 next year. So that would be an increase of about six cents or 5.4%. So we estimate with our current budget, the Windsor tax property tax homestead rate would go up about a percent, and West Windsor would go up roughly 5%. And to show what that would look like to a given house, if we're taking a $250,000 house, for example, in Windsor, your annual increase of taxes would be $31, you know, or roughly 250 a month, give or take. West Windsor, you for a $300,000 house, it would go up roughly $179, a little over 12 bucks a month for West Windsor. So this property tax in, you know, table is an estimate, and you can look up the home value of your house. And within, you know, approximation, see an estimate of how much your taxes would go up in Windsor and West Windsor based on Vermont's Tax Funding Law.
Excellent. Thanks, Larry. So apologies for not having this part of the meeting recorded. Hopefully, this will help give you an understanding of where we're at with in the budget in the budget process. We do have our we have our our annual budget hearing, which is scheduled for February. Just checking the date to make sure I have the right one. Just stop sharing and I can look at the slides faster. The February budget hearing will be on the 26th at 6:30 in room 210 at the high school, and we hope that all of you can come and join us. Thank you.